I call the meeting of the County Commission to order and I'll turn it over to Chris Rippey for the indication.
Thank you Executive Bell, I'm going to ask Chuck Kotoffu Pastor at Smart Assembly, Church of God, to come and lead prayer.
Let's pray. Our most gracious heavenly Father, we love you today. God, we love you with everlasting love. And God, we thank you today for this opportunity, God, as we serve the people of Warren County. I pray that we feel your presence during this meeting because you're wherever we go. Help us to act in the character and conviction. Help us to listen with understanding and goodwill. And help us to speak with clarity and restraint. Give us a spirit of service reminding us that we're stewards of your authority and we do not rely on those decisions of ourselves. As you who know all things, so you have divine, we ask your divine presence in this meeting tonight. Guide these leaders tonight. God, as they make decisions for the people of Warren County, may their actions be made the aim of your people and to build up one another and to edify the citizens of Warren County. We ask all these things in the wonderful name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
I'll now turn it over to Casey Owens for her pledge.
I'd like to invite the Warren County High School FFA chapter to come forward and lead us in the pledge. We have the President Shelby Ford, Vice President Katie Carter, Secretary Madison Pendergraph, Treasurer Erin McBride, Reporter Haley Smith, Sentinel Ethan Womack, Parliamentarian, sorry, Taylor Ogilvy, and Historian Mia Henry.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our ally, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank y'all. If you'd be seated. Well now I ask the clerk to call a roll.
Michael Bell.
Here.
Carl D. Bolden.
Here.
Carleen Brown.
Here.
Randy England.
Here.
Steve Glenn.
Here.
Stephen Hilton.
Here.
Brad Hillis.
Here.
James Hines.
Here.
Scott Kelly.
Here.
Ron Lee.
Here.
Gary Martin.
Here.
Kenny Moffett.
Here.
Cam Montgomery.
Here.
Casey Owens.
Here.
Gary Prater.
Here.
Chris Rippey.
Here.
Christie Ross.
Here.
Scott Ruble. Tommy Savage.
Here.
Donna Smith. Philip Stout.
Here.
Cole Taylor.
Here.
Blaine Wiltshire.
Here.
Twenty-three yes.
All right, now I entertain a motion to adopt their docket. Got a motion by Michael Bell, got a second by Stephen Hilton.
Mr. Chairman, I have an amendment for the docket. Everyone should have a copy of this amendment, is amendment number is GFFY 22-23-16. And if I could, I'd like to have as item number 11A.
Do you put that in form of motion?
I put that in form of motion, sir.
Do I hear a second? Got a second by Stephen Hilton. All those in favor of adding this to the docket is item number 11A. Say aye. All those opposed, passes unanimously. Now we're back on the original docket. All those voting for the original docket, say aye. All those opposed, we've now approved our docket for denying. I would entertain a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I make motion we dispense the reading and accept the minutes for proceeding.
I've got a motion by Randy England and a second by Cole Taylor. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, passes unanimously. We have no public comment tonight. I do have one proclamation, is anybody from the Family Court Awareness here? If there's not, I'm gonna read the proclamation. Whereas the mission of the Family Court Awareness Month Committee is to increase the awareness of the importance of a family court system that prioritizes child's safety and acts in the best interest of children. And whereas the mission of the FCA MC is fueled by the desire to create awareness and change in the family court system for the conservatively estimated 58,000 children a year ordered into unsupervised contact with physical or sexually abused parents while honoring the hundreds of children who have been reported as murdered during visitation with a dangerous parent. And whereas the mission of the FCA MC is to increase awareness on the importance of based education and training on domestic violence, childhood trauma, child sexual abuse, post-separation abuse for all professionals working on cases within the family court system. And whereas the mission of the FCA MC is to increase awareness on the importance of using scientifically valid evidence-based treatment programs and services that are proven in terms of safety, effectiveness, and therapeutic value. And whereas the mission at the FCA MC is to educate judges and other family court professionals on evidence-based peer-reviewed research. Such research is a critical component to make decisions that are truly in the best interest of children. These research includes the adverse child experiences, study, child custody educators' beliefs about domestic abuse allegations, sponsored by the National Institute of Justice, and the child custody outcomes and cases involved in parent alienation and abuse allegations. Now therefore, I, County Executive Terry Bell, by the duty of this office, do proclaim the month of November to be Family Court Awareness Month. I so move. All right, we'll move right into the elected officials' department reports. The first on the agenda is the Warren County Sheriff's Department. I believe y'all have my report, if y'all have any questions. Got a motion by Mr. England, I hear a second, second by Carleen Brown. Do we have any questions?
One thing I did want to say, and I said this in committee and I want to reiterate in front of the full court, the sheriff's actually had a pretty busy month this last month, and I want to personally reach out and say thank you for everything y'all did up at Issa with the fire and helping with that. And I know that we've had a number of school safety issues, and I think you've been handling that extremely well. I believe that your Facebook posts are really helping inform the community on what's going on, and I've heard a lot of great responses out of that. So I want to commend you on that, and also want to say thank you for your inmate program that you've got. I think y'all actually put out, everybody's got a copy of this. I know during the election, a lot of people was concerned about the programs going away and everything. If you look on the second page of that, that's the programs that the sheriff's got implemented. And I know that you might want to introduce your jail administrator there. So they actually have so many programs, and y'all are doing such a good job with that, we've actually run out of space.
That is correct.
And so we're looking for what we can do to try to find some more space, to have more programs for the churches and the SNAP-on, and then you might actually want to talk about your grant that you got as well while you're up here.
Right, we just received a million dollar grant for a welding program and also a CDL program. So we're anxious to get that started. And this is my jail administrator, Kevin York, if y'all do not know him. All right, I have a motion, a second, if there's no more questions, all those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Matheny. Now we'll move on to Mr. Cotton's Financial Department Report. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the court, you have my report, I'll do my best answering at this time. Got a motion by Cole Taylor. Got a second by Philip Stout. Is there any questions about the financial report? There's no questions. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, passes unanimously. Well now I'll call on Mr. Grant Swallows for the Warren County Schools Quarterly Report.
Good evening, it's honored to be before this commission tonight. You have a copy of my report, I won't bore you by rehashing that, but I will be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Got a motion by Tommy Savage, got a second by Stevie Glenn. Any more questions? If there's no questions, all those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, thank you, Grant. Now we'll have the Sanitation Department Quarterly Report. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the court. Give you an update on the Smart and Starlight. I apologize, I get them too confused, Morrison. Smart Station, everything is good to go there. It should be going through the Planning Commission December the 13th. So as soon as that's done, we can get a legal description, get a detransfer on that. Morrison, we have everything good to go, Tommy Lee has approved that, and we are waiting on a legal description. Nicholas Northcutt is out of the country right now, he'll be back Monday, and we hope to be able to get that detransfer and get David paid on that, and get the ball rolling on our permit by rule with T.D. We have been awarded a $50,000 grant at the sanitation department to buy recycling equipment. We had turned in for four 42-yard packer receiver boxes to haul cardboard, that has been granted. We had a new contract come into place with our tipping fees out Southern Central, Southern Central is sold out to Capital Waste Services. Everything on our end will stay the same, nothing will change. And we just had to sign saying, hey, we're gonna stay the same, we're gonna stay under contract until June of next year. So everything will stay the same on that. And any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Please approve.
Got a motion by Ron Lee, second by Stevie Glenn. Any more questions about the report? If not, all those in favor, say aye. All those opposed. Everything's good with Starlight. Thank you, Justin. We'll now have the Highway Department Quarterly Report.
Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the court, you have my report. If there's any questions, I'll try to answer them.
I got a motion by Mr. Prater, a second by Mr. Moffett. Is there any questions about the Highway Report? If no questions, all those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, passes.
Thank you very much, and all you new commissioners, this is the first time I've been in front of you, and it's an honor to say everybody's hearing the new one that's been elected, look forward to working with everybody. Thank you very much.
All right, we'll move on to committee reports, we'll start with Budget Finance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Budget Finance has nothing to report at this time.
All right, we'll move to Buildings and Grounds.
Just let everybody know, there was three bids come in today for the security upgrades for this building in the courthouse. Be letting one of those out in the next few days. That's all I have to report, thank you.
Economic Agriculture.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, we have three items, Economic Agriculture has three items on the docket tonight, other than that, we have nothing else to report. Thank you.
Education.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, at this time we have nothing to add to Dr. Swallows' report, thank you.
Financial Management. We have nothing to report on financial management. So we'll move right on to Health and Welfare.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, as most of you know, we started our inmate program about a week ago, and so far it's going really well, and I appreciate Sheriff Matheny for helping us get that going, and we appreciate that help down there. And also, as you saw on the paper, Lowe's and some volunteers helped put the roof up over our outside kennels, so that is gonna help us a lot going into the winter. That's all we have at this time.
Highway and Bridge.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have one item on the docket tonight, other than that, that's it, that's it, thank you.
Legislative.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You should all have a copy of your revisions that we passed last time and to add to your rulebook, other than that, we have nothing to report.
Yeah, thank you. Policy and Personnel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Policy and Personnel met on November 17th, and we'll have another meeting on December the 2nd. We do have one item on the docket tonight, we'll talk about later, thank you.
Safety. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, at this time, we finally received a chassis to replace the wrecked vehicle ambulance we had about a year ago, a little over, took that long. And it's in process of having the box put on, and we'll have it in service real soon. Other than that, nothing else to report. Thank you. County Corrections and our Partnership.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, we currently have 232 in the jail, 193 of those are male, 39 female, and 14 of them are TDOC. Out of those, we've got 32 inmates that are actually on a trustee program that's working in our county. The sheriff and the jail administrator actually had to do some rearranging of some cells and stuff in order to get that number on up. That's roughly, you know, 20% of our population, so we're excited about that number along with the people that are on programs. There's a great deal of concentration going into those programs, and greatly appreciate that. Our next meeting will be announced later because I am going to try to get it at the Armory, so we can sort of review some of that. And there is a breakfast that the sheriff's gonna be doing for some of the employees, and he wanted to invite some of the county commissioners to go, and that's gonna be the 17th and the 14th? Or 7th, I'm sorry, 7th and 14th. So we'll be looking at that, and that'll be at the jail, correct? So that's all I have.
All right, thank you. The AARP Review Committee has nothing to report. We'll move into new business. I guess we'll ask Mr. Cotton to take care of item number one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, this is a acceptance of a grant that the county archives received. It's 100% state funding in order to allow them to buy some additional supplies.
Got a motion by Mr. Bell, a second by Stevie Glenn. Any discussion? Being no discussion, clerk, call a roll.
Michael Bell.
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden.
Yes.
Carleen Brown.
Yes.
Randy England.
Yes.
Steve Glenn.
Yes.
Stephen Hilton.
Yes.
Brad Hillis.
Yes.
James Hines.
Yes.
Scott Kelly.
Yes.
Ron Lee.
Yes.
Gary Martin.
Yes.
Kenny Moffett.
Yes.
Cam Montgomery.
Yes.
Casey Owens.
Yes.
Gary Prater.
Yes.
Chris Rippey.
Yes.
Christie Ross.
Yes.
Scott Ruble.
Yes.
Tommy Savage.
Yes.
Donna Smith. Philip Stout.
Yes.
Cole Taylor.
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire.
Yes.
Anyone want to change your vote? Twenty-three yes.
Twenty-three yes, passes. The number two through number five, we let Mr. Cotton explain them, but they're all pertaining to the same item.
Yes, in order, when we set the budget, we projected a 5% increase in county's portion of insurance for employees. Unfortunately, shortly after the budget was set, we did finally receive the new rates for the next calendar year, and then later, we got the ACA Safe Harbor threshold. These next four amendments are to put additional money into each fund to cover the number of employees taking insurance in those funds. We are having to add $47 per month per employee just to get down to the absolute, you know, maximum that an employee can charge, can be charged for insurance and still maintain ACA compliance.
Do I hear a motion to approve? Got a motion by Mr. Stout.
Second.
Got a second by Mr. Ruble. Does anybody have any questions?
It was, in November, it was 374. It was scheduled to go to 393, but with this $47, it'll put it at $440 a month.
$440.
Yep. Per employee, per month, who accepts the insurance.
Any more questions? If not, we'll ask clerk, call a roll.
Michael Bell.
Yes.
Carl Bolden.
Yes.
Carleen Brown.
Yes.
Randy England.
Yes.
Steve Glenn.
Yes.
Stephen Hilton.
Yes.
Brad Hillis.
Yes.
James Hines.
Yes.
Scott Kelly.
Yes.
Ron Lee.
Yes.
Gary Martin.
Yes.
Kenny Moffett.
Yes.
Cam Montgomery.
Yes.
Casey Owens.
Yes.
Gary Prater.
Yes.
Chris Rippey.
Yes.
Christie Ross.
Yes.
Scott Ruble.
Yes.
Tommy Savage.
Yes.
Donna Smith. Philip Stout.
Yes.
Cole Taylor.
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire.
Yes.
Anyone want to change your vote? Twenty-three yes.
Passes twenty-three yes. We'll move on to item number three, it's the same thing, Mr. Cotton explained, your motion to approve.
Motion approved.
Got a motion to approve by Scott Ruble, a second by Mr. Hilton. Is there any more discussion? If not, I'll ask clerk, call a roll.
Michael Bell.
Yes.
Carl Bolden.
Yes.
Carleen Brown.
Yes.
Randy England.
Yes.
Steve Glenn.
Yes.
Stephen Hilton.
Yes.
Brad Hillis.
Yes.
James Hines.
Yes.
Scott Kelly.
Yes.
Ron Lee.
Yes.
Gary Martin.
Yes.
Kenny Moffett.
Yes.
Cam Montgomery.
Yes.
Casey Owens.
Yes.
Gary Prater.
Yes.
Chris Rippey.
Yes.
Christie Ross.
Yes.
Scott Ruble.
Yes.
Tommy Savage.
Yes.
Donna Smith. Philip Stout.
Yes.
Cole Taylor. Blaine Wiltshire.
Yes.
Anyone want to change your vote? Twenty-three yes.
Twenty-three yes, passes, and we'll move on to item number four, it's the same. Do I hear a motion?
Motion approved.
Got a motion by Scott Ruble, a second by Kenny Moffett. Is there any questions? Nobody has any questions, clerk, call a roll.
Michael Bell.
Yes.
Carl Bolden.
Yes.
Carleen Brown.
Yes.
Randy England.
Yes.
Steve Glenn.
Yes.
Stephen Hilton.
Yes.
Brad Hillis.
Yes.
James Hines.
Yes.
Scott Kelly.
Yes.
Ron Lee.
Yes.
Gary Martin.
Yes.
Kenny Moffett.
Yes.
Cam Montgomery.
Yes.
Casey Owens.
Yes.
Gary Prater.
Yes.
Chris Rippey.
Yes.
Christie Ross.
Yes.
Scott Ruble.
Yes.
Tommy Savage.
Yes.
Donna Smith. Philip Stout.
Yes.
Cole Taylor.
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire.
Yes.
Anyone want to change your vote? Twenty-three yes.
Passes twenty-three. We'll move on to item number five, it's the same thing for the Highway Department, do I hear a motion, we approve? Got a motion by Michael Bell, do I hear a second? Got a second by Scott Kelly. Any more discussion? If not, I'll ask clerk, call a roll.
Michael Bell.
Yes.
Carl Bolden.
Yes.
Carleen Brown.
Yes.
Randy England.
Yes.
Steve Glenn.
Yes.
Stephen Hilton.
Yes.
Brad Hillis.
Yes.
James Hines.
Yes.
Scott Kelly.
Yes.
Ron Lee.
Yes.
Gary Martin.
Yes.
Kenny Moffett.
Yes.
Cam Montgomery.
Yes.
Casey Owens.
Yes.
Gary Prater.
Yes.
Chris Rippey.
Yes.
Christie Ross.
Yes.
Scott Ruble.
Yes.
Tommy Savage.
Yes.
Donna Smith. Philip Stout.
Yes.
Cole Taylor.
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire.
Yes.
Anyone want to change your vote? Twenty-three yes.
It passes twenty-three yes, and we'll move on to item number six, I'll let Mr. Cotton explain this.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, when the codes budget was submitted during budget time, the prior director was under the assumption that his travel, once he became a part-time employee, when he was traveling in his personal car, would be run through the payroll system, but that's not how it is done, so this is an amendment to move both the wages and the benefits out of those payroll line items to establish a travel line, to put additional funding in the travel for his personal use, for his use of his personal vehicle at work, and then to put some additional funds into in-service training.
Do I hear a motion? Got a motion by Scott Ruble, do I hear a second? By Mr. Savage. Does anybody have any questions? If there's no question, I'll ask clerk, call a roll.
Michael Bell.
Yes.
Carl Bolden.
Yes.
Carleen Brown.
Yes.
Randy England.
Yes.
Steve Glenn.
Yes.
Stephen Hilton.
Yes.
Brad Hillis.
Yes.
James Hines.
Yes.
Scott Kelly.
Yes.
Ron Lee.
Yes.
Gary Martin.
Yes.
Kenny Moffett.
Yes.
Cam Montgomery.
Yes.
Casey Owens.
Yes.
Gary Prater.
Yes.
Chris Rippey.
Yes.
Christie Ross.
Yes.
Scott Ruble.
Yes.
Tommy Savage.
Yes.
Donna Smith. Phillip Stout.
Yes.
Cole Taylor.
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire.
Yes.
Anyone want to change your vote? Twenty-three yes.
Uh, motion passes twenty-three yes. We got number, item number seven is another budget amendment for the Highway Department.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This one is to transfer funds from, uh, Highway and Bridge Maintenance, where they, uh, normally pay for road paving, uh, into highway equipment in order to facilitate the purchase of another tractor with a side mount bush hog, uh, with the intention to be, to sell, uh, some older tractors later in the year, and have those funds put back into, um, contracted services.
Got a motion by Mr. Prater. A second by Randy England. Any discussion? Levy, do you want to speak to this?
Yes, uh, my one friend said, it says side mount, which is a boom mower, it's on the side, but it's a long arm boom mower, which is a little more expensive.
That's all I'm trying to say. Not, my bad.
All right, sorry. It is side, but it's a long side.
Any more questions? If not, I'll ask Clerk Colerole.
Michael Bell.
Yes.
Carl Bolden.
Yes.
Carleen Brown.
Yes.
Randy England.
Yes.
Steve Glenn.
Yes.
Steven Hilton.
Yes.
Brad Hillis.
Yes.
James Hines.
Yes.
Scott Kelly.
Yes.
Ron Lee.
Yes.
Gary Martin.
Yes.
Kenny Moffitt.
Yes.
Kim Montgomery.
Yes.
Casey Owens.
Yes.
Gary Prater.
Yes.
Chris Rippey.
Yes.
Christie Ross.
Yes.
Scott Ruble.
Yes.
Tommy Savage.
Yes.
Donna Smith. Phillip Stout.
Yes.
Cole Taylor.
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire.
Yes.
Anyone want to change your vote? Twenty-three yes.
Passes twenty-three yes. Now, we'll move on to item number eight, which is approving the bond for Philip Youngless Constable. Do I hear a motion? Got a motion by Mr. Bell, a second by Kenny Moffitt. Any, any discussion? Bein' no discussion, I'll ask Clerk Colerole.
Michael Bell.
Yes.
Carl Bolden.
Yes.
Carleen Brown.
Yes.
Randy England.
Yes.
Steve Glenn.
Yes.
Steven Hilton.
Yes.
Brad Hillis.
Yes.
James Hines.
Yes.
Scott Kelly.
Yes.
Ron Lee.
Yes.
Gary Martin.
Yes.
Kenny Moffitt.
Yes.
Kim Montgomery.
Yes.
Casey Owens.
Yes.
Gary Prater.
Yes.
Chris Rippey.
Yes.
Christie Ross.
Yes.
Scott Ruble.
Yes.
Tommy Savage.
Yes.
Donna Smith. Phillip Stout.
Yes.
Cole Taylor.
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire.
Yes.
Anyone want to change your vote? Twenty-three yes.
Passes twenty-three yes. Now, we'll have the approval of the noters.
This is the list for the notaries. Amy Aguilera, Rosie Grissom, Ally Haley, Peyton Holland, Penny Medley, Hillary Neal, Lindsay Patterson, Dietra L. Wiles, and Cassidy L. Cantrell.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Bell, and a second by Mr. Hilton. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously. We'll go to item number ten. It's, uh, we'll let Mr. Ruble speak to this budget amendment here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, this is to appropriate the funds, well, I've, or to approve the funds for, uh, the tree removal project. This is phase one at the airport. Uh, we already approved, we put, uh, twenty-five thousand dollars in his budget previously, and we thought that was going to be suitable, but we found out later that more trees were in the way. So, this is, uh, actually penetrating the instrument approach on the new approach. Daytime is fine, but nighttime, it's, it's not allowed until we get these obstructions removed. Uh, the eighty-five thousand dollars will allow us to put out to bid, uh, the projects west of Airport Lake Road, and they actually corner onto, uh, Polly Titsworth Road. This is for, uh, tree removal, tree topping, uh, stump grinding, uh, fence repair, replacement, I think it's going to end up replacement, and some tree replacement, and he has, uh, Mr. Dyers got some estimates, looks like it's going to be somewhere in the eighty-five thousand dollar range. We've got a twenty-five thousand dollar buffer in his budget. Uh, this passed respective committees unanimously, and I so move.
I've got a motion. Got a second by Blaine Wiltshire. Does anybody have any questions? If no one has any questions, I'll ask Clerk Colerole.
Michael Bell.
Yes.
Carl Bolden.
Yes.
Carleen Brown.
Yes.
Randy England.
Yes.
Steve Glenn.
Yes.
Steven Hilton.
Yes.
Brad Hillis.
Yes.
James Hines.
Yes.
Scott Kelly.
Yes.
Ron Lee.
Yes.
Gary Martin.
Yes.
Kenny Moffitt.
Yes.
Kim Montgomery.
Yes.
Casey Owens.
Yes.
Gary Prater.
Yes.
Chris Rippey.
Yes.
Christie Ross.
Yes.
Scott Ruble.
Yes.
Tommy Savage.
Yes.
Donna Smith. Phillip Stout.
Yes.
Cole Taylor.
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire.
Yes.
Anyone want to change your vote? Twenty-three yes.
Yeah, passes twenty-three yes, number ten. We'll move on to item number eleven, Mr. Tommy Savage.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We, uh, we received a letter of resignation from Judicial Commissioner Kevin Deason. It's effective December sixteenth. And I'd like to put this in the form of a motion, and I so move.
All right.
Second.
I've got a second by Carleen Brown. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, all those opposed? Passes unanimously. Mr. Savage, eleven a.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is, uh, GFFY twenty-two, twenty-three dash sixteen. I'd like to put this in the form of a motion. I so move.
Got a motion by Mr. Savage. Do I hear a second? Got a second by Mr. Stout. Any discussion?
Yes. This is for the Code's Department. Uh, the, the vehicle he's been driving, the transmission is out, and it's a two thousand and five model, and this, this office doesn't have a line item for this, and we're going to try to get something from the state surplus, and, uh, he's got to have a vehicle, and this is a very busy office, and, uh, we, we appreciate your help on this, and, and the vehicle he's got, when we get something, it'll probably be put on gov deals, and so that much will be coming back too. Thank you.
Any more discussion?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I don't know if you mentioned or not, that's ten thousand dollars, correct?
Yes, sir, that's ten thousand.
Any more discussion? If not, I'll ask Clerk Colerole.
Michael Bell.
Yes.
Carl Bolden.
Yes.
Carleen Brown.
Yes.
Randy England.
Yes.
Steve Glenn.
Yes.
Steven Hilton.
Yes.
Brad Hillis.
Yes.
James Hines.
Yes.
Scott Kelly.
Yes.
Ron Lee.
Yes.
Gary Martin.
Yes.
Kenny Moffitt.
Yes.
Kim Montgomery.
Yes.
Casey Owens.
Yes.
Gary Prater.
Yes.
Chris Rippey.
Yes.
Christie Ross.
Yes.
Scott Ruble.
Yes.
Tommy Savage.
Yes.
Donna Smith. Phillip Stout.
Yes.
Cole Taylor.
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire.
Yes.
Anyone want to change your vote? Twenty-three yes.
Yeah, passes twenty-three yes. Now, we'll move to item number twelve, uh, Airport Appointments, the Airport Zoning Committee. Mr. Carl Bolden.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, on the zoning committee at the airport, we had some resignations, and we had a couple of, uh, of the, uh, appoint, uh, committee members, their time had expired. The Airport Commission met and has brought forth four names. It's went through, uh, Economic and Cultural Committee, and it passed four-oh. At this point in time, we only have four members. Uh, the names are Jason Kribs, Brad Hillis, Brad Womack, and Kelly Bassam, and I so moved that these are approved.
Second. I got a second by Mr. Ruble. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously. Mr. Bolden, number thirteen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number thirteen is the same thing, but this is the Appeals Zoning Board. Uh, we have three names. It, it also came from the Airport Commission, and it passed Economic and Cultural Committee four-oh. The names that, uh, have been presented are Ron Lee, Brent Foster, and Greg Brock, and I so moved that this be approved.
Do I hear a second? Got a second by Phillip Stout. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Passes. Now, we'll go to item number fourteen. Gary Prater.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a resolution on the bridge on Oak Shelville Row. The Warren County Legislative Body of Warren County, Tennessee, wishes to honor the memory of Donnie Ray McCormick by naming the bridge crossing the Barren Fort River on Shelville Road in Warren County, Tennessee, the Donnie Ray McCormick Memorial Bridge, and I would like to ask Mr. David Grissom to come to the podium. He won, he's, he served with Donnie in Vietnam, and he's going to tell us a little bit about that. Thank you.
You don't know how much I'm honored to be here in front of you. I'm a small country boy from Marston. I have kin folks, it's right here in the group, but I won't point them out. And I've worked with a lot of good people here. I was drafted in nineteen sixty-three, and Uncle Sam saw that I was a good mechanic, and he sent me to Germany. And, uh, I met my wife, I was there. She was a child of World War Two, and I was a child of World War Two in Warren County here, and I'm proud to say that we going on our fifty-ninth year of marriage in celebration of it this year. I'd like to say I raised four sons, two daughters, twelve grandchildren, and twenty-one great-grandchildren. And we have a good Christmas and a good Turkey Day every time. But I gotta turn back to time a little bit, back to nineteen sixty-eight, and the young man we're gonna take in honor is this young man right here, and I wish I would have been able to make everybody here a copy of this, along with all the other pictures I have of him that I have here in this folder. Mr. Haley got it started way back a month and a half, two months ago, and ever since then, I've made it a goal, my goal, to see that he would be honored. He was killed shortly after his twentieth birthday in Vietnam, on the eighth of February nineteen sixty-eight. I stayed in touch with Donnie in Vietnam, and I called him the day that he was killed that night, and I told him I was coming up to see him the next morning because I was in aviation. I reenlisted and went in aviation school and was working on fixed wing, rotor wing, multi-engine aircraft, just anything that they had over there that flew. And we got hit at the same time that he was hit, and our base was, had only artillery fire. I was sixty miles away from Donnie, but he told me that day that I talked to him, please call the orderly room because there'd been a lot of action, and they might be on patrol, and they didn't know if he would be available for me to see him. and they didn't know if he would be available for me to see him. But I would have had a flight that would have took me up there from my unit to see him. But he said, please call the orderly room and talk to the first sergeant, so I did. The next morning, I called the orderly room and the first sergeant said, I have to give you some bad news. Donnie was killed along with many other soldiers in our unit last night. And he said, if you want to accompany the body back to the States, I will put your name down. I told him, I believe his brother-in-law was in country in Vietnam, close to where we were at, and I would defer for him to be the escort to take the body back or go back with the body. I felt that my duty was to call my wife and let her know that he was killed, and I did. And it was 37 days before the family really knew that his body was back in the States and he was to be buried. I stayed in 22 and a half years. I served 13 years in Germany, a year in Korea, a year in Vietnam. I've been in almost every state in the United States. I had a three-year Pentagon assignment in Washington DC, and they do things just like you people do right here. You have a meeting and they take an R and I out and say, yes or no, we're going to do it. But did you ever think about getting 24 general officers in one room and get an agreement? That is very hard to do, and I've seen it, and I've not been able to forget it. But I just want to say, the young man that you're honoring is well-deserved of that. His, his father and mother own the land that borders where the bridge is. His family, a sister, two brothers are still living. He has cousins and nephews that own a farm right there next to it. And I would be very proud to be one of the honor guards because I work with the honor guards that do all the funerals for our veterans. I'd be proud to be that sergeant or that person that tells them, let's raise the flag and honor this soldier who was lost in 1968 and remember him. And his family and the people that cross that road in that community would be proud that y'all put his name on that bridge. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much. Well, I'm just going to take and tell you all the awards that he got. Donnie was an expert marchman, infantry badge. He received the Purple Heart. He also received the Vietnam Service Medals. There's three of them. He also received, he was promoted to Specialist 4th Class, and he was on the end for a short time. A lot of soldiers take two years to get Spec 4, Specialist 4th Class. I was in three years before I made sergeant. I went to Vietnam as a sergeant. And looking back at his records and his declarations, Donnie McCormick must have been an exceptionally good soldier and a good person. Because I remember when he used to go with his mother to church, when my mother and their whole family, my grandfather, all lived in that community, went to church together. And Donnie's father served in World War II in the Navy. His oldest brother served in the Navy during the Korean timeframe. And Donnie was lost to the war in Vietnam, and I can imagine how much suffering his mother had. So doing this, the honor to put that up and put that on that bridge is a, a great honor to this community and to this country. And I salute the American flag every time that I walk by it and say, that's my flag and this is my country, and God made it that way and I'm proud of it. [applause] I'd like to ask my wife to stand up. I'd like to ask my wife to stand up.
Mr. Chairman, just as soon as we get a date for when we're going to put that sign up, we'll notify everybody.
All right, we thank you for your service.
Mr. Chairman, motion approved.
He has some family members on this court, and I'd love to see them make the motion and second it. Ms. Casey Owens makes the motion that we get this bridge named after Donnie Ray McCormick, and we need a second for Mr. Carl Bolden. We're proud, I think, as a, as a county court to be able to provide this. We'll have to pass it on to the state and we'll have a ceremony when we get the signs ready and everything. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, pass unanimously. All right, now we'll move on to item number 15, Justin Cotton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a resolution to allow the county to purchase from the National Purchasing Partners Government Entity. It is a nationwide cooperative purchasing organization. We have several in, in effect currently. This would just be another one on our list.
Motion approved.
Got a motion from Mr. Bell, does your second?
Second.
Got a second from Stephen Hutton. Is there any questions? If no questions, all those in favor say aye. All opposed, passes unanimously. Now we'll move on to number 16, Resolution Number 21.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Resolution Number 21 is the Bridgestone Pilot Program. I'm just going to read the top half of it. Resolution Number 21, whereas the Industrial Development Board of McMillan Warren County, Tennessee, the IDB, is authorized and empowered under the provisions of Section 753101 through 753317 of the Tennessee Code Annotated, as amended the Act to acquire whether by purchase, exchange, gift, lease, or otherwise as to own, lease, and dispose of properties for certain purposes identified in the Act. And whereas Bridgestone Americas Tire Operations LLC, a Delaware Limited Liability Company, the company operates a truck and radial tire manufacturing facility located in the county, the facility, and whereas the company intends to invest in a major expansion and modernization of the facility, which will create a large number of new jobs at the facility, the project. And whereas, an inducement to the company to complete the project and in accordance with the provisions of the letter attached heretofore as Exhibit A, the IDB has negotiated a lease providing for a payment in lieu of taxes for the facility in the amount of $650,000 per year, the pilot lease, commencing with the effective date of the pilot lease and extending for a period of 20 years from the date the last of the project equipped is placed in service at the project. And whereas pursuant to the Act, the county desires to delegate to the IDB the authority to negotiate and accept from the company payments in lieu of such taxes and to enter into the pilot lease and such other documents as necessary to effectuate the pilot lease. And whereas, there has been presented to the county commission at this meeting, a proposed form of the pilot agreement.
I hear a motion we approve. Got a motion by Ron Lee, that's your second. Got a second by Kristi Ross. All right, any discussion?
Chairman, I want to make the mark. When we get this discussion, you get more ready, you get one time until everyone else has got time. It's a real one, and I am keeping up that.
All right, any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Carl Tyler.
Boy, there's a lot of discussion on this, there's no doubt. A lot of people worried, a lot of people tore up, not knowing where to go, which way to go. And there's not a commissioner in this room that is not for jobs coming here and staying here. There's not one in here, I guarantee it, me included for sure. But at the same time, we also represent the taxpayers. And three years ago, we put a 28 cent tax increase on those people. And we have to answer to that, not the IDB, not nobody, not the director of IDB or nothing. There's no doubt that this deal is going to bring in some good tax revenue later on once it gets done. It's going to bring in some jobs. If all the jobs today, if the job was, if it was done today, Warren County couldn't fulfill the jobs that they're saying that they can give. There's no possible way. So all the tax revenue's not going to just come to Warren County, it's going to other surrounding counties too. Because you can go to Bridgestone today and drive through there, and there's probably 45 to 50% of Warren County people that work there. And that's okay, that's fine. But the biggest thing with me is, and I personally feel like the negotiation was, on this was not the best. I feel like we had a lot of playing cards in hand that we had to work with. Coming up in 2029, this pilot would have been over with and we would have been bringing in $2 million worth of revenue of taxes on Bridgestone. I'm sure we'd have made another pilot with them, there's no doubt in my mind. And we should, we should, because they do bring a lot to Warren County, there's no doubt. But Warren County also gives a lot to them. Right now, they're saving 1 point, a little over $1.3 million in tax revenue every year that they could be paying that we're not getting. And like I said, 20, three years ago, we put 28 cent tax burden on the taxpayers, which is 1.68 million. And as a, as a commissioner and as a person that sits on budget and finance and on financial management, when you have people come in there and wanting to give county employees raises, stuff like that, it's, it's hard to look at them and tell them no sometimes. I've done some figuring, you know, if we could have got another $650,000, that would have given the county employees a dollar raise. That would have given the county employees a dollar raise if we could have got another $650,000. And with this addition, the Bridgestone's going to be adding, that would have still been saving them probably around $2.7 million a year in taxes if we'd have kept, if we could have just got another $650,000. I'm for jobs, and I can't, nobody say that I'm not. When I ran eight years, or five years ago, I run on bringing more jobs into the county, and I want to see that happen, I do. I want to keep good jobs because I want to keep our young people here, and not only just young people, the older people, I want to keep them good jobs. But I want to do it in a fair matter. I'm not mad at Bridgestone a bit. I'm in business myself, I want to save all the money that I can get, believe you me. I want to save it any way that I can, taxes is one of them. But I want it to be fair across the board. I just feel like this job was negotiated, and personally, in my own opinion, moving forward, I feel like the county commission needs to be involved in negotiating these deals. Because we got all the skin in the game. When we have to raise taxes on people, we're the ones that have to answer for it. When we have to look a person in the eye and say, we can't give you this much money to give your people a raise because we don't have it, we're the ones that have to answer for it, we're the ones that catch the grief over it. So moving forward, I ask that we be more in with the negotiations and stuff like that that may occur that goes on with the county, because this is a big deal. It's a great big deal. And that's, that's pretty much all I've got to say. Thank you.
Any more discussion?
I have just one question. It's made for the commission or IDB. What happens if we don't take this deal? Is there any con to taking it?
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. I'm Jenny Nafroda, I'm the current chairman of the IDB Board. We have Tim Painter here as the Bridgestone Plant Manager, and Mr. Charles Trauber here is a lawyer from Bridgestone, and so we'll let him respond to that.
Good evening. Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
And the question was, what happens if the resolution is not passed? So from Bridgestone's standpoint, the negotiations that took place that led to the pilot agreement or letter that we received from the IDB, we had capital planning based on that pilot payment that was in the letter. And if that pilot payment is not approved, or the pilot is not approved, then Bridgestone's expansion would be in jeopardy. And I'm happy to stay up here and take any other questions.
If you want to stay there and see if anybody else has got any questions. Does anybody else have any questions? Mr. Rob.
Mr. Trauber, is that correct?
Yes.
I've got a couple of legal questions that I want to make. Excuse me for not standing up, I've got my paperwork before me. But we are, we were reviewing a few legal issues, but to my understanding, at this point, we are beyond negotiations as far as timeframe, as far as construction dates, things like that. We, we have reached the end of that negotiation process, is that correct?
Well, based on the IDB meetings last week, there were some additional conversations, and Bridgestone made a commitment to have a hard start date in the pilot agreement. Whereas before, it was based on the date of in-service for the equipment. And the improvements, we agreed to have the pilot begin on June 30 of 2027.
Okay, so, but I guess my question is, is this, this is the final deal, there's, there's no going back to the table and renegotiating this from a timeframe or a financial standpoint, is that correct?
If you mean from timeframe as far as the duration of the pilot, 20 years, no, we would not be able to renegotiate that. We would not be able to renegotiate the pilot payment. We are amenable to making a commitment in the pilot agreement to the number of jobs total at the facility that we would commit to.
Okay, well, and that, that comes up to, that's leading up to this, what, what we're, we've been looking at, and I don't know, you may have this in place, but, but we cannot find it, but TCA, which is Tennessee Code Annotated 7-53-305, and I'll, I'll read the entire paragraph. No pilot agreement providing for the acceptance or waiver of payments in lieu of taxes, including any renewal or extension of such payment, agreement, may result in a corporation's leasing making payments in lieu of taxes in an amount less than the applicable ad valorem taxes for a period that is greater than 20 years. So, so that basically puts a 20-year limit on this contractually through, through TCA. Also, it says that 20 years plus a reasonable construction or installation period not to exceed three years unless both the Commissioner of Economic and Community Development and the Comptroller of the Treasury have made a written determination that the agreement is in the best interest of the state. And my question is, do you have an agreement in place that would extend the construction period beyond three years with the Commissioner of Economic and Community Development and the Comptroller?
So we are aware of that statute that you just read and the limitation on the duration of the pilot. We have not submitted anything to the state yet because we would need to have the pilot approved, and we are prepared to submit a best interest determination to the state to have a pilot that would be more than 20 years.
So is it typical to, to ask for this agreement after the negotiations, or does it typically have to, it is?
It would have to be submitted with the best interest determination.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Any more discussion?
Thank you. I agree that, and I've said this from when I came, came into office 12 years ago, I wish that the commission had a little bit more involvement in the IDB. But at the same time, I do disagree that our county won't be benefiting largely from this because even if people come from out of state, I mean, out of town to work here, they're going to stop at our, our local gas stations, our restaurants, they're going to spend money here, they're going to buy gas here. I know, I've worked out of Warren County my whole life, other than the first few years. I still work out of Warren County. I had to go where the best job was for me. So I do understand that we may have a hard time getting some of our, our own kids to work here, depending on where they're already working. But some of them will, and no matter what, somebody's going to fill those jobs, and they're going to eat lunch in Morrison or wherever, they're going to get gas in town, and they're going to shop our stores. And I am for it 100%. Thank you.
Mr. Scott Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I'd like to thank Bridgestone representatives here for the commitment and the loyalty to Warren County you showed over the past 40 years. We really appreciate what you've done, what you've meant for our economy here, and we really appreciate that very much. And I, but I'm concerned about the negotiations, like what has been said, and that we did not have representation as a commission, and this deal was just plopped on us last Friday night, which is the first time that I had seen it or heard about it. I just wish we would have been brought on board a lot sooner in the negotiation process. But having said that, I still, I cannot let those jobs and the, the tax money go from this county, so.
Mr. Gullen.
I think that we should say yes. Like Scott said, we don't need to let this job go. Bridgestone's done a lot for us, and we need to continue going. The deal's not perfect, everybody understands that, but we need to move forward and not look back.
Any more discussion? Mr. Traub.
I, like all commissioners, want to thank Bridgestone. You know, they all opened your door in 1990, and have, we've done numerous things for our community, and we've got a million tires that come out of that facility. That's nothing to, you know, shake a stick at, that's an achievement in itself, and I think our county's done a lot for Bridgestone, as Bridgestone's done a lot for us. Y'all are very philanthropic to our community, and a number of companies have benefited from y'all being here. We appreciate that, and I think everybody's in agreement that we want y'all to stay and we want you to grow. That's extremely important. Again, I'm going to express my discontent with our agreement, you know, in 1988 or 89, a dollar compared to now, there's a 2.63% increase in inflation in that. So basically, a dollar in 1989 compared to now is $2.63. So I, I don't feel like we got the same deal as we originally cut, and I'm sort of, I guess, like Cole and a few of these others, disappointed in that. But at the same time, I don't think I can turn my back on Bridgestone. I want y'all to grow, I want y'all to prosper, just as I want our community to grow and prosper. But I want to challenge our IDB. Now, we've got all this growth. Where's the sewer going to come from for our industrial park? Where's that money going to come from? Y'all going to come to the commission and ask for that? You know, we've had some issues with, with, with the infrastructure here. You know, who's going to pay for the roads? How are we going to pay for those? How are we going to keep the schools? It's going to be, these employees want to come and bring their families. How are we going to pay for that? How are we going to pay for the infrastructure that's going to be needed to support not only the jobs that they're bringing, the 380 jobs, but according to this, because Bridgestone has been so gracious to do this, looks like we're going to get 1,141 total jobs. That's amazing, guys. But it takes a lot of money to continue to grow and to help that, and that's where I think our IDB has failed us. Bridgestone, kudos to y'all. We appreciate you, and we look forward to seeing you grow.
Any more discussion? Mr. Carl Lambrou.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to say something about what Bridgestone has done for this county. Not only has the jobs, but you, we have a $50 million payroll that comes into this county. And if you take the time to review this impact study here, you will see that having them here and what they contribute to the county is far more than what we would be getting if we paid the full property taxes. So our benefits far outweigh that. Also, something else about Bridgestone that we don't want to ever forget is what a great contributor to this county they are. Over the years, I spoke with Sean Kelly about, because I was, knew him for several years as he was at, at the plant here in Warren County, and he was telling me, I was asking him about the, the trust fund, what it contributed to our county. And he said, well, I know for at least 20 years, they gave $150,000 to $200,000 a year annually to this community. They were so big in the Partners in Education Program, golf tournaments, Meals on Wheels, Families in Crisis, Habitat House, the Robotics Center, Kids of the Community, Warren County Senior Center, the Jungle Gym, the Yule Pool, many, many sports programs, school programs. They are the, one of our best supporting industries. All our industries are important, but Bridgestone has an ability to do more because they are bigger. And we have, Stephen was even telling me today that, how they have contributed also to the Warren County Fair and done things for our local volunteer fire departments. This is something that we need to move forward on and address, the concerns that we, that you brought up about negotiations, but at a later time. But tonight, I hope that you will support and vote yes for this pilot program. One other thing that I wanted to mention that was brought to my attention today about the concern about the jobs, how we're going to fill those. Well, Mr. Alexander told me today that 41% of our workforce leaves this county every day to go to work because they have gotten on that road to drive to a better-paying job. These are going to be better-paying jobs. Maybe some of those 41%, whatever that total numbers of people, will stay here now and take those jobs, and it won't take the job away from someone else. But it does an oper, that's a large number of people that hit that highway every day to leave, to go to work. So there's, there is your answer to the jobs. Well, a large number of them. Anyway, so that's, that's all I wanted to say, and I do appreciate that we had this opportunity, and hopefully we'll get to have a grand celebration and a ribbon-cutting. Thank you.
Any more discussion? Mr. Chairman. Mr. Kelly. Does anybody else want to speak before Mr. Kelly speaks again? If not, go ahead, Mr. Kelly.
So do I understand right, these new direct, indirect, and induced jobs, 1,141, is that on top of the number of jobs you already have out there?
No, that would be total.
That's total?
That's total.
Okay. Does that include the 380 that you're proposing?
It would include the 380, yes. That's, that's my understanding.
Mr. Traub. Just to talk, what I think he's looking at is this cost versus benefit analysis. The number, this is something I think that Tennessee Board, State Board of Equalization has put out. This, this is not direct to Bridgestone.
Yep.
I'm not sure how many employees y'all currently have, but it's an additional 380 off of what you currently got. This is a different study, completely.
That, that's correct, and just to clarify, if I may, or, if I may, so originally, under the, the original pilot, in that pilot, we referred to, which was not a commitment, but it was a reference to have 750 jobs. a reference to have 750 jobs under that original pilot. Today, I understand we have about 1,000 jobs, so we well exceeded that statement from back in 1989. This would be an additional 380 jobs on top of the more than 1,000 jobs that are there today.
Mr. Chairman.
Gary's not spoken.
I operate a restaurant in Morrison out there, and somebody from Bridgestone's just about there every day, or I'm over there catering sometimes about every day, maybe five days a week. They're one of my biggest accounts. And saying this, I'm going to call for the question.
All right, we've got a question called for. Do I hear a second? All right, we got a second. All of us in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, we'll now proceed to vote. The Clerk call roll.
Michael Bell.
Yes.
Carl Bolden.
Yes.
Carlene Brown.
Yes.
Randy England.
Yes.
Steve Glenn.
Yes.
Stephen Hilton.
Yes.
Brad Hillis.
Yes.
James Hines.
Yes.
Scott Kelly.
Yes.
Ron Lee.
Yes.
Gary Martin.
Yes.
Kenny Moffett.
Yes.
Cam Montgomery.
Yes.
Casey Owens.
Yes.
Gary Prater.
Yes.
Chris Rippey.
Yes.
Christie Ross.
Yes.
Scott Ruble.
Yes.
Tommy Savage.
Yes.
Donna Smith.
Yes.
Philip Stout.
Yes.
Cole Taylor.
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire.
Yes.
Any one more change or vote? 23 yes.
Passes 23 to zero. And I just want to thank Bridgestone for their commitment to the county and their picking Warren County to expand. Now, we'll move on to item number 17.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a resolution authorizing the Director of the Warren County Animal Control and Adoption Center to carry a weapon while on duty. Whereas the Warren County Animal Control Department is charged with the duty of securing and containing aggressive, abused, or otherwise unsafe animals inside of Warren County, Tennessee, and which may pose a threat to the safety and welfare of the citizens of Warren County, Tennessee, and whereas it is the duty of the Director of the Warren County Animal Control Department to confront dangerous situations involving animals in Warren County, Tennessee, for the purpose of protecting the health and welfare of the citizens of Warren County, Tennessee, and whereas there are intrinsic and inescapable risks involved in working with animals that are part of the job of the Animal Control Director, and whereas an acknowledgement of the dangers connected with the job of Animal Control Director, and in an effort to provide a degree of protection to the Director of Warren County Animal Control, the legislative body of Warren County, Tennessee hereby declares that it is an authorized and permitted role for the Director of Warren County Animal Control to possess a firearm while on duty and while on county property, and now therefore be it resolved by the County Legislative Body of Warren County, Tennessee, meeting in regular session on this 21st day of November 2022, that Section 1, that the Director of Warren County Animal Control shall henceforth be authorized to carry a firearm while on duty and on county property. Section 2, that the Director of Warren County Animal Control shall comply with any and all other state and federal laws regarding the regulation of firearms. Section 3, that nothing in this resolution shall be construed to permit or authorize the Director of Warren County Animal Control to ignore any other state and federal laws and regulations of any kind whatsoever regarding the possession, control, usage, and carrying of firearms. Section 4, the Director of Warren County Animal Control, in order to utilize the authorization herein, must first be in full compliance with any and all other regulations regarding a person's legal capacity to carry a firearm. Section 5, the Director of Warren County Animal Control will be required to undergo annual firearms training before the authorization permitted herein becomes effective. Section 6, that in the event of any conflict between the authorization permitted by this resolution and otherwise existing state or federal regulation or law, and/or subsequently passed state or federal regulation or law, the other regulation or law shall control over this resolution. Section 7, that this resolution shall become effective upon passage the welfare of the county requiring it, and I so move.
We got a motion, got a second, but Stevie Glenn, any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'm not saying I'm against this. I want everybody to know that. But I would like for our county attorney to give us an opinion if this would be legal or if it would be a liability for the county, and just give his picture of it.
Well, I think it's prudent to point out that the regulation of firearms is a state function. This is nothing that the county can do. What we're really talking about is removing a prohibition in the policy and personnel manual for employees about prohibitions of having a firearm. So, we're not authorizing any type of carry permit that can't be done by the state. Anybody in this role is going to have to get all types of regulatory permission through the state anyhow. What we're doing is simply removing it from the policy and personnel manual. Now, as to question of whether or not the person having a firearm on them on duty, sure, there's absolutely the potential for some type of liability. The best way to try and counter that is to have the training that's required by this resolution annually, but there is no way to completely disconnect liability to somebody carrying a firearm. It's just, it's incomprehensible that it could ever be done.
Mr. Hillis.
I was going to ask Commissioner Wiltshire, when he, in the resolution, it states annual firearm training. What, to what degree is that, is it going to be the same training as a deputy?
It's unclear in the resolution. It would be the county Executive's call about what would be sufficient for that. It would not be the same training that's going to be done for a police officer because part of their training is obviously to de-escalate situations with other human beings. Mostly, the training is just for somebody to have the same type of training that you get for a concealed carry permit, even though those are now no longer needed in Tennessee. It's just firearms training so that there's not accidental discharges. That would be the intent of that.
Well, I'm for carrying. I'm not, I'm like Tommy, I'm not against somebody carrying. I just wonder why now? Why do we, why does she need to carry now?
If I may, Executive Bell, what brought this up was basically the inmate program that we've started. It come up during discussion that our Director already has a concealed carry permit, and obviously, you know, with the inmate program, it, safety is a factor, and that would be just another safety measure that she would have as a Director to carry the firearm that she is legally able to carry in the state of Tennessee, and that's where it come from.
Mr. Bolden.
All right, that raises another question. How many inmates do you have working down there? Two. Do the jailers carry guns inside the jail?
We have, we have one that I've taken out to the door because they're with them that is, that is here.
Okay, now, she don't need it for the inmates then? And I'm pretty sure you're against shooting dogs, so I still don't know why she needs it.
Mr. Bell.
I think if we're going to do this, she should follow under the guidelines of the Sheriff, and, because he's got programs for special deputies, and he authorized that. We do not need to pass this. So, I make a motion that we send this back to committee, and they work with the Sheriff and rewrite this.
I got a motion and a second on the table to send back to the committee. Any discussion?
I hate to put the Sheriff on the spot here, but ultimately, I mean, he's receiving some liability here. What are your thoughts on doing that?
I would have to, I think that it would be, you know, for me to ask, to ask what they advise me to do on this, so I have to, since we're going to counsel on this, too. There might be some issues with me making her a special deputy because she's already working a county job, maybe some practices, so, I mean, there might be some issues with paying overtime or something like that. So, I'm not sure. I have to, I have to think.
All right, I've got a motion on the floor and a proper list second to send it back to committee. Unless Clerk call roll, if there's no more discussion. This is to send it back to committee. This is what you're voting on.
Michael Bell.
Yes.
Carl Bolden.
Yes.
Carlene Brown.
Yes.
Randy England.
Yes.
Steve Glenn.
No.
Stephen Hilton.
Yes.
Brad Hillis.
Yes.
James Hines.
Yes.
Scott Kelly.
Yes.
Ron Lee.
Yes.
Gary Martin.
Yes.
Kenny Moffett.
Yes.
Cam Montgomery.
Yes.
Casey Owens.
Yes.
Gary Prater.
Yes.
Chris Rippey.
Yes.
Christie Ross.
Yes.
Scott Ruble.
Yes.
Tommy Savage.
Yes.
Donna Smith.
Yes.
Philip Stout.
Yes.
Cole Taylor.
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire.
Before I vote, I want to make sure I do clarify something because I'm glad to take this back to committee if we need to. I don't think it's necessary. But we do not want to put any animal down. Everybody that knows me knows that, I don't have to say that. But I do want to know that if our Animal Control Director has the right to carry a weapon, like a lot of us do, that she can use it in the case of emergency. I do want to know that, so I vote no.
Any one more change or vote? 21 yes, two no.
21 yes, two no. Committee for further review and to fix it. Now, we'll move on to special presentations, and Mr. John Brown is asked to be removed. He's going to come back later. He wants to talk about this Veteran Service Officer. And now, we'll ask Mr. Jason Krebs if he would come forward.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, it's good to see everybody. I, to start off with, I want to have a tremendous amount of respect for those that served in Vietnam, Mr. Gressom, and all the others that served. We owe them a debt of gratitude. My brother spent two tours in Vietnam. And if you think about it, many of us have children that are 20, in their 20s, and that's how old these guys were when they were over there. My brother was 19 when he went, when he signed up. But that's not why I'm here, but I do want to pay my respects for those guys. I want to talk just a little bit. I came in uniform for a couple of reasons. One, mainly, just to let you know that Warren County has a very positive and long history of military service, and there's a great many people here that serve that you'll never see in uniform. I served for 34 years. I don't think there's a one of you in here that ever saw me in uniform. But that's not to be said that there are people just recently that have served in Afghanistan, Iraq, El Salvador, Qatar, Yemen, that are living right here in Warren County, but you don't know about it. But that's part of being in the National Guard. And I want to talk just a little bit about the Armory, the old Armory, the new Armory, and I have a suggestion that I put before you for you guys to discuss at some time. The current Armory that's out here was built in 1957. That goes back a ways. The maintenance building right behind it was built in 1946, and that's the oldest Armory in the state of Tennessee that's never went over, undergone any renovations. It's the second oldest Armory in Tennessee, period, in the whole state. The, at one time, in the 80s, there were only three people in Warren County that were associated with the Armory here, and it was very close to being closed. They were going to move it to, just move everything to White County. And General Max Hastings, at the time, was over the 278th, and he spearheaded, more or less, the recruiting efforts to get more retention here in Warren County, and basically to keep the Armory open. The efforts for the new Armory that is underway right now actually started in 1990. That's some 30-plus years ago. And all of us know that the government wheels, especially the federal wheels, move real slow. And so, this has been an ongoing project for many years. General Hastings, General Max Hastings, he grew up here. Actually, I don't know, some of us, I went to school with him, and I'm sure many of us knew him or know him. He still has land here. His daddy was in the Guard, spent 44 years. Max stayed 40 years in the Guard. And his grandfather was in the National Guard. That family by itself has over 100 years of military service right here in this area. But I say that to tell you that Max has worked with pretty much every county executive in recent histories. Kenny Rogers, John Pelham, Herschel Walker, Jimmy Haley, and of course, some of you, Mr. Chairman being one of those, were on the Finance Committee when this land got purchased out here that is, the Armory is now being built on. Now, normally, this is funded 75% by the federal government, 12 and 1/2% by the state, and 12 and 1/2% by the county. Well, Max got to studying because he knew that, well, first of all, he couldn't ever get the state to fund it, and he knew that the county would have trouble funding it. So, he kept looking at ways to get it funded, to get it approved. And he looked at the National Guard regulation, and the regulation is 420-10 and 415-5, and he discovered that the National Guard Bureau, when it reorganizes a unit like the 278th has been, and during that reorganization, if that causes the unit to be larger than the current facility, then the federal government will fund 100% of the building. And so, that's what's happened out here. This is pretty much it. I think it's about 98 or close to 100% federally funded. Now, the county did buy the land that it is sitting on, which, kudos to them. But I guess what I'm getting at, my point of being here, is my recommendation is that that Armory would be named the Major General Terry Max Hastings Armory. That is my recommendation. If you guys, whenever you bring it up to vote on it, if you would like, I'll draft the resolution for you guys to vote on, and it would be signed, and the next step would be to send it to the state legislators. I guess Paul Sherman?
Cheryl.
Cheryl. And then Janice Bolden, and they'll take it to the Governor. I'll push it on the military side because General Holmes has to sign off on it as well. That wouldn't be a problem, and then it would go from there. So, anybody have any questions for me? All right.
I'd like to figure out there was a question if you would have started working on the resolution.
Okay, all right. All right, I'll take care of it.
Yeah, maybe we can get that done. I really appreciate you coming, Jason.
Yeah. There you go. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to announcements. I'd love to Mr. Charles Dodson, our newly elected District 2 Commissioner, to stand. He'll be joining us in December, so I know he's ready to get started. You have anything you'll say, Charles?
Good to see y'all, y'all. It's going to be nice.
All right. And on behalf of the county Executive and the Sheriff's Department, we'd love to thank everyone in the whole community that come out and volunteered during the fire we had up on the mountain. It was just a really outreach to the community to show how much support we had. And the only other thing I have is I just want to congratulate Bridgestone, and want to thank you for all you do for your community, and we're looking forward to the expansion in the future. If anybody has a...
I'll accept a motion to adjourn. Mr. Chairman, you have some?
I have one thing. When I talked about Kevin's letter of resignation, I forgot to say, I'd like to thank Kevin for his nearly five years of service as a second shift, full-time judicial commissioner, and he's leaving for a better job, a higher paying job, and he's leaving on good terms, and we wish him the absolute best. He's been an asset to Warren County. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion when you adjourn. Do I hear a second? Got a second? A motion by Cole, and a second by Mr. Stout. All of us in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All right, thank all of y'all. All right, thank all of y'all.